Thank you very much. We have minutes.
Last meeting?
Last meeting. Cathy's gonna be second. Right, Kevin? Great, quick sessions, we have none, right, on Tuesday. Is there anything scheduled for next time?
Not yet.
All right, they put right into it. All right, first up tonight is UPS. Distribution of our site sixty nine fifty six Skyler Road. This is for final, is there anyone here? There we go, Christopher.
There you go again.
Christopher Doye.
Christopher Doye, all right. Is there any? Having changeless from?
That's the last thing.
Yeah, there's not, nothing left, so we can.
Did anyone have a chance, everyone have a chance to read their proposal solutions?
All right, well. Motion then here? So this is a motion to approve the site plan package for sixty nine fifty six Skyler Road, last dated two twenty seven twenty five, following findings and conditions. This is an application for a site plan for transportation distribution on an industrial zone parcel, which is intending to temporarily support the operations of the UPS facility located across the street at sixty nine forty six Luthen Boulevard, while that facility undergoes renovation. Pending renovation consists of internal changes to the existing facility and does not require site plan approval, rather than that renovation will require all relevant building permits and adherence to building codes. However, in such, inasmuch as the site plan on this parcel supports the overall use on the adjacent parcel, and given the interest in the condition of a critical service, the site plan review and conditions herein include structures that are more of a temporary nature than might otherwise be acceptable for a permanent site plan installation. The applicant has also presented as part of the site plan, a plan for restoration of the site, accordingly, the condition we're in, as agreed to by the applicant, reflecting this understanding. This board has reviewed the SEAF of the applicant dated one seventh of twenty twenty five, and finds no significant adverse environmental effects from the project. Issues a negative seeker declaration for this unlisted action. This matter is exempt from Andaga County Planning Board review. This board approves the restored parking area and landscape plan as shown for sixty nine fifty six Skyler Road on site plans, site plan drawings labeled L two oh one and L four oh one, with the condition that the temporary operations on this site must cease and the premises restored to the condition as set forth in the site L two oh one and L four oh one drawings. The earlier of one hundred and twenty days from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the premises at sixty nine forty six Luthen Boulevard, or two, December thirty first, twenty twenty seven, any extension of this timeframe would require a good cause shown to the planning board. This board finds that in accordance with recent New York DEC guidelines, the applicant has provided an expert assessment with respect to potential wetlands on the property, and no actual potential wetlands have been identified on or affecting the property. Accordingly, this site plan approval is made with the understanding that there are no New York State jurisdictional wetlands, which would impact this site plan, and may proceed in accordance with town procedures, with any risk of saying being that of the applicant. However, in the event, the DEC should, after a full review, determine that the site plan will be impacted by jurisdictional wetlands, the applicant will need to return to the planning board for any site plan modifications that would be required. This approval is made with the further condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents, that have been signed by the planning board chairsperson and the applicant, and requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials shown in the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to the Town and the Wet Code Section one nine two dash one two two. Anybody want to make that motion? Kevin? Cathy? All in favor? You know, this passes for us. Great, thank you very much. Next up is pathology. Sixty six twenty four Fly Road, I'll try. Not out.
It's final?
Any summary you want to change?
Sure, I'm Kurt Charlin, college engineer, we're the civil engineers on the project. Really, nothing's changed since last. We're still, you know, in process with, with the DEC for the jurisdiction overview. We're gonna have to do some reflagging of previously flagged wetlands, things like that, that'll happen May first. We have sent in our JD verification request to DEC, so we're, we're on their clock sometime between May and June, I would hope, depending on how helpful they are for us to go through that process. Outside of that, I think everything else has been submitted to the town. The only outstanding issue that we still have is final coordination with WEP on our acid waste chamber. We did have some communication with them this week. They said they were gonna issue a conditional approval, knowing that there's a few of the documents that can't be submitted until all the plans and everything, the building plans are completely finalized and submitted for building permits.
What's the May first deadline?
May first is the earliest you can do an official wetland delineation. So that's the date, because that's the official start of the growing season. So you can do delineations previous to that, but you still have to go out and do kind of a confirmation. So DEC, Army Corps, they'll use May first as a hard date, or they'll go out and do any modification in field. Our wetland specialists, of course, can go out, because they'll be green up and stuff. Before that, we can check for boundaries, things like that. What we would then do is when, when our team goes back out with, in this case, DEC, that's when they'll look at the boundary and they may say, wow, there's a little leg here, maybe it moves in, or maybe it moves out a little bit here and there. We adjust our markers and then update lands and mapping accordingly. But May first is that, it's May first and November first, I believe. It's, you know, it's kind of those hard dates, similar to what we're dealing with with the BACS, where it was November first to March thirty first, they just had those dates set regardless of weather conditions.
Thank you. It doesn't affect what we've decided to do, under the condition that we had previously discussed at the workshop.
All right, anybody having? Motion then, you're with me, this is my own. Still, I'm trying to keep it going. All right, this is the planning board of the Town of the Wet hereby approves the site plan of upstate pathology lab ownership LLC, consisting of the following site plan documents. Number one, the whole site plan.
Yeah, you don't have to read them, you have to read each of them.
Oh, good. And there's a lot of them, yeah.
There's thirty five.
Thirty five documents. They're all listed here. See, so this, this motion to approve is made with the following findings and conditions, the findings. This application consists of a request for construction of a new three-story, thirty eight thousand square foot plus minus footprint, one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty square feet of medical pathology lab, parking, EV charging stations, utilities, stormwater mitigation, landscaping, funding, and associated site.
Pertinences.
Pertinences. Too late night for that. Project access will be through the existing main entrance, sixty six twenty Fly Road, associated with the existing upstate bone and joint center. Seeker, the Town of the Wet Planning Board declares this action type one pursuant to seeker at its August twenty second, twenty twenty four, regular held Planning Board meeting, and also declared its intent to act as lead agency for these actions. The full EAF, which is applicable to the action and all other information presented by the applicant, is on file with the Town of the Wet. This board issues a negative seeker declaration for the project dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty five, which full decision and findings therein are incorporated by reference herein. The zoning board decision, this applicant issued two variances by the zoning board of appeals dated January twenty first, twenty twenty five. An area variance allowing for the increase in reserved parking from twenty five percent to forty four percent, with the town code one nine two dash one zero three E. Number two states that up to twenty five percent of required spaces may be reserved for future parking, and an area variance allowing for a dumpster, a truck dock area within front yard, with the town code one nine two dash ninety three E. Number three requires that all refuse collection areas be located on side or rear of the building. The Andaga County Planning Board, this board has reviewed the two fourteen twenty twenty four Andaga County Planning Board referral with respect to the items raised therein, determines the following. One, this board acknowledges that per the New York State Department of Transportation, additional stormwater runoff into the sites, into the states right away is prohibited, and no direct connection to the state stormwater system is permitted. Any mitigation, as may be determined by the department, shall be, shall be as a condition of site plan approval. Two, per the New York State Department of Transportation, a drainage study or stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWIP, is required to show that the proposed development would not create additional stormwater runoff into the state's drainage system. The applicant must contact the department to determine the scope of the study. Any mitigation as may be determined by the department shall be as a condition of site plan approval. Number three, this board accepts that the applicant is required to coordinate Fly Road access plans with the Andaga County Department of Transportation. To further meet department requirements, the applicant must submit a copy of the stormwater pollution prevention plan and lighting plan to the department for review. Any mitigation as may be determined by the department, by the department shall be as a condition of the site plan approval. Number four, this board is satisfied with the traffic impact analysis provided by the applicant to support this project. Number five, the applicant must coordinate with the Andaga County Department of Water Environmental Protection regarding the proposed transmission of connection to the town and county sewer system. Any mitigation as determined by the department shall be considered, shall be a condition of the site plan approval. Number six, the stormwater pollution prevention plan must be submitted to the Andaga County Department of Water Environmental Protection for review, and any mitigation as may be determined by the department shall be a condition of site plan approval. The New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, DPC, in its seeker findings, this board reflected the impact of the new twenty twenty five DEC regulations on this project and determined the following. This board is assured that should the wetland delineation ultimately be determined to be greater than is currently presented, plans for development can be and will be required to be reasonably reconfigured to mitigate any potential negative impacts on wetlands. Because any impacts to the wetlands can be mitigated, this board finds any potential impact to the wetlands can be adequately addressed. Since the issuance of the seeker determination, the town engineer, planning board attorney, and director of planning and zoning have been, partied to several conversations with the DEC relative to the new regulations and their impact on this site. Based upon those further discussions and interpretation of the DEC regulations, it has become apparent that additional wetland mitigation measures will likely be required on this site, and may potentially impact some aspects of the site layout. However, the further studies and delineation required to determine the exact impact may take several months to fully evaluate. This applicant has had this project before this board in its current iteration for in excess of six months, and the entirety of the project in excess of two years. Given the likelihood that impacts can be mitigated, and the fact that the project otherwise admit all requirements of site plan approval for the town, this board is determined that it will issue a site plan approval in accordance with code, with the code and regulations of the Town of the Wet, and subject to conditions herein. Conclusions and conditions. The planning board of the Town of the Wet approves the site plan above, set forth with the following conditions. One, that no building permit shall be issued for this project until the applicant has provided proof that it's completed the process outlined by the DEC for determination of jurisdictional wetlands and follows any steps for avoidance, minimization, or mitigation of wetlands disturbance as determined by the DEC. In event such determination requires modifications to the site plan herein, approved, the applicant must return to the planning board for approval of any amendment of modifications to the site plan. Two, that prior to the certificate of occupancy be issued, the applicant complete the plan for a sidewalk along Fly Road in accordance with plans approved by the New York State DOT, County Highway Department, and the planning board. Number three, that any condition set forth above as part of the Andaga County Planning Board approval be complied with. Number four, this approval is made with the following, with further conditions that this approval is for the plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents, that have been signed by the planning board chairsperson and the applicant, and requires that all the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials on the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to Town and the Wet Code Section one nine two dash one two two.
Can we just make a small change?
Yes.
Number two, applicant complete the plan for a sidewalk, just say the sidewalk.
For the sidewalk, yeah. Okay. Anybody want to make that motion? Cathy again, right, who first? All in favor? Dennis? Okay, you're first.
So many people, I couldn't keep track. Cathy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is the ATT Wireless Facility. We've had discussions then, we'll take one of that until the next, next meeting. We'll agree to that, so.
Yes, Cathy, I'm looking at requested, um, determined to the next meeting of the site plan, because it's planned. Per the request.
All right, next up, White College Pavilion.
Hi, everybody. So as you all know, we've been doing these quad improvements for a year, just started off by removing the parking lot that was in the middle of our campus. Switching over to sidewalks and long ones created a big square for our Bruin Hall. This past summer, we did the last extension from the chapel, we switched out the paper and concrete walks, and now this project is looking to start fixing up Dablon Quad, and we're just gonna pull up the aerial, just so I can give you a sense of where that is. Are you on Google Maps? Because they had, they had all the new stuff, so it seemed to be shame. In any case, so we've done the square, we've done the rest of the walks, we've been here for all that work, I think it was three, three years ago now. And what we're looking, what we're looking to do is start, start extending this language down the plan over here, and the area that we're gonna be talking about is really kind of this triangle over here, which is adjacent to our campus, campus center. And off of that wall are two ballroom, the current special events room under James Connors. And what we're looking to do is come out onto that quad and create a little terrace, so that when we have events and weddings, et cetera, it can spill over to the outside. This is a special quad in the sense that it has three residence halls around it, Dablon Hall, Ford Hall, and Meligan Hall. So it has sort of like a more casual atmosphere, if you will, than the academic quads up above that are more sort of like civic in nature. Our students like to have a little fire pit where they sit around, so you'll see, Steve is gonna present the design in a minute, but I'm just trying to give you the prelude to it. You'll see that we have, in addition to the terrace, we have a pavilion that we're proposing, so there's a covered area for students to hang out by day, a fireplace that's two-sided, so you can sit under the pavilion, enjoy the fireplace for fifteen to twenty minutes, or the other side, and also to improve that sort of gateway. When we've been here talking about our master plan over the years, and pulling cars out of the center of our campus, we've been talking about creating these various drop-offs and pickup points to get people closer to the buildings, but like not inside the campus itself. So this, this drop-off is fairly significant for us, because it's off of Sea Lot, which is one of our largest lots. It's where a lot of prospective parents who are coming from outside the area to see the campus for the first time, and so we're really trying to clean up that drop-off, and also have a couple like the masonry piers, like we've done on Springfield Road, as a gateway that you're arriving into the Lemoine campus, and improving the walk that basically will take you from here to the stairs, and then you're into the new system of walkways and paths. It's pretty low, and I won't answer any questions.
Good to see you, everyone. I'm Steve Breitske of EDR. You know, some of you, but not all, but happy to be here to present Lemoine. Are you bringing up our P? Okay, just checking.
It's a little slow.
That's fine. They're big files. I was gonna walk you through some of the previous phases, but what, to pair that, so I won't, what we'll start with is just the survey sheet, just to orient you, show you where we're working. There it is. There we go. Let's see, if we go to the next sheet. Okay, there it is. That's fine. So this is the latest topographic survey detailing some of these areas that Fu had mentioned, so you can see here the square, which was phase two of these projects across the quad. Phase one was removing the parking lot there. Phase three, as Fu had mentioned, was the recent work in front of the chapel, and now, if you can scroll to the top of the page here, you can see that is our work area now in front of Dablon in the campus center here. Couple of paver walkways existing, we've been systematically removing the pavers across campus with each of these projects. It's an old zebra paver that has been failing, so that's been one of our efforts as we establish this new palette of materials. Okay, let's skip ahead to the site plan. Let's actually, let's stop right there. So this is our demo plan, just to orient you, so north is to the top left, obviously that one quad here, so you can see we're removing number, quite a quantity of the existing pavers. We're leaving a portion of them just outside of our work area, in terms of what the new work will entail. We're removing the existing brick wall here, and starting fresh with the landscape, with the ground plane, from our starting point here, which was staircase established with phase one down to the gateway, that Fu had mentioned off the parking lot seat. So we can go to the next sheet, this will be our materials plan. So this really tells the story of.
What's the elevation drop downstairs?
Down this. Right there.
Quad is, how much lower than that?
I wanna say four or six feet.
Significant.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. But the stairs staying, so we're working from that elevation. We did the stairs part of last phase, Ken, Ken.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're extending, starting at that point, we're extending our sidewalk out, and that's been the sidewalk that you would see going all the way up, past Bruin Hall, through the plaza. We just completed the last phase in front of Riley Hall, and eventually would look toward going to Mitchell Hall at the far end of the quad. But coming down those stairs, onto our new sidewalk, we have a split there, there's this walk extending down to the campus center that, again, picks up a significant grade. We're keeping it.
So that's everybody's way to food.
Yes, great.
The resident's also dining hall right through there.
Yeah. Ten-foot wide sidewalk there, which accommodates that hungry mass, and also snow clearing equipment for the campus. We're finalizing our grading on that. As part of this project, it's not represented here, but as part of the project, there is a steam line replacement. And you can see it's coming in here, it extends up and around our quad, and that's to avoid all of the features here that I'll go through, but that resulting relocation is affecting our grading of that walkway, which we're, again, we're finalizing on the approach to the campus center. Continuing down the diagonal from that split is where you get into the fun part of the project, and what we're really excited to be providing for the campus is this outdoor plaza space, as Fu had mentioned, it's an extension from the campus center. So these paver areas are where we have two sets of double doors that lead out into our new plaza space, so those would be at finished floor, and then across the entire space, if you were to exit here and go back to the split that I mentioned, it's just under four feet grade change across that entire space. So the plaza as itself will be a nice large flat area for students, for visitors, for events. It's approximately thirty six hundred square feet of pavers, that's the hatched area that you see there. We're anchoring it, and this would be the east side, with our staircases making the way down to make up that grade. We'll flank the plot, the larger stepped area here with stairs on either side, so that's only a three-foot drop across that, and between the stairs, we're making it up, and then with that stepped area, we have two eighteen-inch-high granite seat walls.
What happens on the north side, up against the sidewalk?
Up here?
No, no, keep going straight down, diagonally down to the left.
Here?
Right there, yeah.
This is a plant bed here, and this is a retaining wall, a stepped retaining wall to make up that grade.
Sidewalks ramping up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doors are there.
Yeah.
You have a retaining wall to keep the terrace flat.
Right. But we are stepping it, so by the time you get down here, we're not faced with a tall wall there.
Were there ramps for those stairs somewhere?
There, for these, there, you can access the space this way.
And from the right side?
And from that bed, but not directly that way. Yes. So, once you're in that space, the dark rectangle is the pavilion that we're planning. It's twenty by thirty-six feet. It's a wood pavilion, standing metal seam roof. Have eight posts for it, so we're trying to make it as open as possible for flexibility to provide covered space for events. As Fu had mentioned, they currently have a small fire pit in the open space, we're formalizing that with a brick fireplace under the pavilion, will be vented out the sides, so it does not have a chimney going through the roof. Would be on a timer, and.
We're only willing to heat the atmosphere fifteen minutes at a time.
That, that's on gas? It's on gas, yes, yeah. It's double-sided, you can see through it, so trying to open that space up and just provide a nice gathering spot under the pavilion. Like I mentioned, it's a wood pavilion, it will be stained like a dark gray, the roof, standing metal seam would also be gray, keeping it simple but providing that flexibility, and it would face our stepped seating area there, those are the eighteen-inch seat walls, and depending on how events are set up, we're just providing that flexibility there. Then as you exit out of the plaza this way, Fu had mentioned, we have two piers located here, and that's a vocabulary that we've set up with previous phases, brick piers with lighting in them, that really sets off that entrance and that gateway for people arriving in parking lot C, if you scroll down a little ways. So this would be the, the drop-off area, this is an existing island, so as you pull into the space, we have a few bollards just to prevent anyone from going too far, and then as you make your way into the plaza, those piers are right there, and they will be, again, a little light illumination to mark that pathway into the space. This entry to campus center is remaining, we're tying into the existing sidewalk here that leads in front of Dablon.
You're pulling that whole sidewalk, shifting it over.
This one.
The area, yeah.
Correct.
So you're so tight to the corner of that building there, that entrance.
So the stairs, you know exactly where you're going, and actually, I'm gonna interrupt for a minute, if it's okay, because the story about this is really beautiful. We have an alum who wrote us a check for a million dollars to do this, and he's naming it after his mother and her family, who, five of them have gone through Lemoine, and his goal is all about building community, and one of his uncles had a great relationship with Andagas while he was at Lemoine, and so we're gonna approach Frida, figure out a way to honor the Honechonis through either, I don't know what we're gonna do yet, but we wanna be respectful in the way that, that we do that. So it's kind of a very nice gift, but it specifically catered to building community, and so that was how we targeted it, having it between the three residence halls, having a pavilion, having a fireplace for the students and everybody to come together, and that's how this is happening today. place for the students and everybody to come together, and that's how this is happening today.
Do you, do you wanna keep going through plans, or are there questions at this point?
Are you proposing any different drainage areas?
So the existing storm system is remaining. We are extending outside of our area that we show here, out to that point, that's a hydrodynamic separator that we're adding to the project. With Phase 1, we were able to get a thirty-seven percent reduction in our impervious, and that allowed us to avoid water quality measures for previous phases, so we've been slowly whittling down on that thirty-seven percent as we go. With this project, given the size of the plaza, we're dropping below the twenty-five percent. By two percent, we're down to twenty-three now, and we looked at ways that we could bring our hydrodynamic separator here to treat this in particular, but the grades and the drainage pattern wasn't working, so putting it here, it's bringing, it's accepting water off of Phase 1 that ties into the existing system. We have a trench drain here, there are two existing catch basins there that will remain, we'll just adjust the elevation based on the new project, and then that drains out to the left here. So that's, that's one new structure, and then we will have another new catch basin here, and a few area drains to pick up in the plant beds.
Mark, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Mark had a couple comments about the lighting, that the lighting plan is a few areas where the eight-foot candle max has exceeded, and you also need cut sheets.
Okay.
So, Mark, did you wanna provide more specific information about?
On the lighting?
Yeah.
Uh, no, no, those, those were the main issues, there weren't any cut sheets and light fixtures, and again, the maximum levels exceeded the eight-foot candle max in the code, so yeah, that, that's it.
Okay, we'll take a look at that, it's the same light fixture that we always use every.
I think you may have submitted cut sheets, and I'll link to a file, but I don't think we got hard copies, so I think Mark might not have seen them. Or I think there was a link to them.
Okay.
Yep. Hard copies. Yeah, I mean, it was a pretty big booklet.
No, that's no problem, we can, we can, we can shut it.
The only comment I really had, I think you had stuff where you were showing plantings, but I didn't see like species or varieties. Oh yeah, can we go to 401? Or maybe, maybe I did, and it wasn't the plant ID key, maybe they weren't. So, we haven't keyed them yet, as of this, the middle, we had not keyed them, we do have our list. And, yeah, here we go. So this is. Yeah, so we do have some nice planting areas to anchor the space. As you come down this walkway to the campus center, we're flanking that on either side with a ground cover, and with boxwood, which has been established, again, with previous phases. All of the plant materials are extending across each of these phases, which has worked really well, so we're learning what has done well on campus, how the campus can maintain those items, and then build on that palette. We have a larger planting area here as a backdrop to that seating area, providing a softer edge for the view from the pavilion. Of the different plant materials, so the small one that you see, the dark, is the boxwood, so that's the small shrub, and then as we get into it, we've got some different mix of evergreens and deciduous shrubs here, but it's going to be across that area, they're usually, they're typically three to four feet in height, with a couple larger, and then down here, we have more of a perennial planting, so those will be lower, longer plants.
At your point on community, it nestles, it creates a sense of space.
Right.
Place instead of just a few extension out over the wall.
Right. Trees we're keeping to a minimum, just to let the architecture frame the space, but we are adding a shade tree. That, that's gonna be, I think that we had that as a red oak, if I remember. And then a few river birch down at the bottom here to announce that entrance, some nice multi-stem plant material.
Are you losing the one that's on the, by the walkway down?
Yes, we are, yes. Yeah, due to the grading, and here's a good, you can see the steam line relocation is the dashed line here, so that has certain impact across the site. Uh, the can, the pavilion, let's go down. So we have a couple of drawings, the.
I know, I saw them before. If you had any bigger, better, better, bigger.
Yeah. So this, this is representative of it, we do have technical drawings from the manufacturer as well.
Okay, so what's that?
But this starts to give you the framework for it, so we'd have eight posts, so we're keeping the short ends open to allow that pass-through, and then view from the stepped area over on the right here. You can see the fireplace, we're keeping that low within the space, so it's not projecting up through the rooftop, standing metal seam roof. Wood post.
How's that venting again, that's spreading out this?
It goes out the sides, so there are vents, so this is a seating area, if you wanna get that close, but there are vents of the side of the brick on the low sides. And then we'll have event power in the base here, and we'll have the fireplace controls in the base there.
You can't talk over the fireplace, so it's often.
Talking over it, you would probably not do. It's, I mean, if you look at the, just the height of.
So you can, you can sit and enjoy it under the pavilion, or you can sit between the retaining wall and the fire pit, if you have like a sky above you, you have two, two ways of enjoying.
Well, you first, I thought it was more like one of the craftsmen.
Oh, something low.
That we sit around and.
So they have, they have wood burning ones that we supply wood for, that sits on the lawn with, that are on their chairs, further over to the left.
So you're, so you're keeping that one?
Yeah, yeah, this is a little different. We're trying to make tonight for seasons for our students, so that they don't feel that winter is a present. It does have, this pavilion does have corbels that brace the columns, it's not in the diagram, but they all do, it's, it's the same one that the town has in its parks. It's from the same people. Except this one's gonna be all stained gray, the building has gray metal, and gray columns and a gray metal roof, and we're running that palette to just get it all to blend in, we're not trying to make a statement with it.
Yeah, they, see, so keeping this clear of any posts.
It's open gate, right, correct?
On this, yes, yes, yes.
It's probably when you sit on the steps, if something's happening in the pavilion, you can see.
Can you go one more sheet? I think that was the. So these are, these are just generic details from the manufacturer, but like Fu had mentioned, you can see the braces that we would have there.
It's a great little project for us. It's a space that we don't currently have anywhere else, and it expands the use of our ballroom space for events and weddings and.
How many have weddings there?
You would be amazed, we will, we have like five or six a summer, because people like to come and get married in the chapel, and they have their receptions in our ballrooms, and so this will, if it's nice out, they can have cocktails outside and then come into the ballroom for dinner.
All right, anything else? A comment that we really appreciate you coming in with this, because you're on that fringe of visibility. We prefer to see it, we love what you're doing up there, and we're really supportive of the whole concept of the quad and.
Glad to hear it.
Fixing the park.
It's been huge for us.
Yeah.
It really does.
Presentation today.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Last but not least, still up here, I see Jason in the bathroom.
Good luck, everybody.
Not Jason.
Well, hopefully this is the last time you see me on this project. I like Mark, he drives me crazy. So, there's kind of two parts to this project, one of them, he mistakenly thought that because there was metal roofing over the uncovered porch area that he could replace. He was doing some renovations, some of the, the front facade, that kind of barn look, which was old cedar shakes that they failed fifteen years ago with metal. Which you guys pointed out to him lightly that you can't. The other piece, he said, since we're coming back here, especially after this winter, he has, at his entrance, there's only one door into the space, which goes right into where the seating area is, he wanted to create a vestibule. And he wanted it as simple, and as small, and as kind of discreet, so it's gonna be matching the same board and bat and siding, there's a new door, there's a new, two windows on it, which are gonna be the same color storefront, you know, aluminum thing, glass. Not gonna be heated, not gonna be anything, we'll add an extra light fixture in there, just because it's gonna be closed off, but the, the plan would be to six by eight, it's under, underneath the existing underneath the existing covered porch area. So we can, we ought to go to the other elevations, I think.
Plan that shows it too.
So, it's this, this roof all along here, is that what he, I think it was all the way to that end, is what he changed to metal, and that's, so that's what he's looking to try and get approved. And then the, the little porch that we're adding is actually this little sliver right here, and then you can see it in the, and up. It's right there, so it it blends in in the picture, which I'm hoping that it blends in in real life. So, those are the two elements that we're here looking at.
Put the vestibule on your site plan.
It's underneath, it would be underneath the covered porch, so.
Dash it in on the site.
I can show it on the site plan, no problem, but if you go to the floor plan of the building, you'd see.
We're trying to get, understand the sidewalk relationships to where the entrance points are.
Yeah, so when we came in for the previous approval, we actually shifted that parking and got a little more grass area. I mean, if you wanna go to the site plan, I'm happy to.
Yeah.
Point to where it's really clear. So the entrance is right here on the building currently, that's, we're gonna just have that box will be right, right in that spot.
And my question was, the sidewalk that runs above the parking, right up towards that area, it looks like it's not aligned with where that vestibule is, and is that a?
This parking along the front?
No, no.
This, this new sidewalk?
Sidewalk that aims up, seems like it's not going to the.
It's just short of, I, you know, he hasn't done it yet.
Yeah.
He actually, I think he just put in for the permit to do the patio work. That's an, that's an easy, I'm happy to change it on here and let it work it up.
What I'd like to do is have you take the site plan data, sidewalk data, turn it on your floor plan, so you can see all those lines, and they're not round and coordinated.
That's easy. But otherwise, we're not looking to change any landscaping or anything.
And you answered our other question, was material compatibility of the vestibule to the rest of the building to match what's going on there.
It's gonna be the same board and bed and pane of the same color.
Where, where did we stand on this? Wood roof versus the metal roof before, did we have?
We haven't seen it before.
Yeah. I mean, I got, I got the whole picture of the shingle.
Yeah, you can see it's a pretty rough shape, right?
What is the metal, is, and you already, you already start putting it up?
It's up, so if you wanna see what it looks like.
The standing seam.
It's not a standing seam, it's more of that comer industrial grade there.
And if that wrapped it, is it just on the front, or is it wrapping, trying to get the extent of it?
It just runs across the front. Yeah, where the wood shakes are currently.
And you're not doing, doing anything different, you're gonna adjust the site plan for the sidewalks from what you had to line up with this.
Yep.
Into drawings. And I guess, is there any issue we have with the metal panel on that canopy?
I'm confused, they took one of the columnar roads out of the parking lot?
It's on the columnar roads, right along this front.
There's a bunk two-story chunk with the.
Do you have a picture right there, I can?
Yeah, 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 that's right, that's what you want. Yeah, so that, that little three-foot section off the, you know, she had parked.
Yeah, my comment is, I don't really have a problem with metal, what color is it?
I believe it's gray, you sent me that color.
So it matches the metal that's on the.
I think that was the intent, it's painted, I think the other one was an old galvanized.
There we go.
In this picture, but I have the material.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, actually, I think the metal canopy might look better than what was there to begin with, so.
He does try and do a good job, he's not trying to do things to be cheap.
Yeah.
I have the email. Yeah, the desk could be much nicer.
There it is, I see it continued all the way down, that area, okay. It does extend on. Just a note on your drawings, the metal roof, the extent of it, from the corner, all the, wrap around the base shirts, yeah, it looks clear of the belt, but that's what was done. All that, empty ball in the future. Yeah, landscaping. I do like the stone corner side.
This is the color. Material.
No gutters, right? All right, so does anybody have any other comments or concerns, or can we just clean up the drawings?
Yeah, so I'm gonna look at doing, showing it on the site plan, the vestibule, I'm gonna do a label on the metal roof and modify that sidewalk.
Yeah, and coordinate it both, so we can see the big scale of all the sidewalk.
So this is the picture, you know, the first one was like the previous picture, and this was.
Yeah. It's an improvement.
Yeah. This is the fire exit, yeah. It's not used, it's always locked, so the main dining, the bar and the main dining area is over here, this is kind of more, you have a private function or it's overflowed, there's a lot of people there.
Right? That's it, we're good. All right, thank you very much. Get it back in again. Clean it up and get a vacuum again. Who's second in the motion that was meeting?
You snuck if you haven't.
These guys at every planning, every other.
Happy second.
Right, Jamie?
Okay, so I'm ready to start recording of the on favor of closing.
Of adjourning for, I remember anyone who's coming Tuesday morning that was committed.